The order, please call the roll.
Bergeron.
Here.
Harris.
Present.
Carlson.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Seibertson.
Here.
West.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Um, please drum in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Brings us to Communications. We have two proclamations today. I shall read. The first one is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas in two in every four women and one in out of every six men living in Alaska will experience domestic violence during their lifetime, creating long-term damaging effects on the victim and impacting family, friends, and communities at large. And whereas families are indispensable to a stable society and they should be a place of support to instill prospective values for the next generation, whereas the problem of domestic violence crosses all economic, racial, gender, education, religion, and social societal barriers. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates individuals' privacy, dignity, security, and vanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. Whereas victims should acquire compassion, comfort, and healing they need and should have access to medical and legal services, counseling, shelter, and other supportive services. Domestic abusers should be punished to the full extent of the law. And whereas domestic violence victims and their families and friends are encouraged to seek assistance from individual individuals and programs that provide services to victims of domestic violence. Whereas increased public awareness of domestic violence is essential to eliminating it through prevention and education programs. Now therefore be resolved in recognition of ongoing struggles people have to break the cycle of domestic violence. And in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs and victim services providers. Hi, Lou Williams, the third mayor of the city of Ketchikan, Alaska, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2013 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all citizens actively work together to eliminate violence against people in our community. Here today's sign. And is Diane here? Oh, Angel, great. The microphone is all yours.
Joel Jackson, Gateway Center, being served with a keela. Diane's got some information. Probably saw some news or paper. But it's it's just sort of unanimous. Everybody we see, it seems like where I work has been through some of these issues. And I think in fact, global data probably underestimates the real figures, but that was
Thank you, Joel. I'd like to pass out to you tonight a copy of the report we got from Dr. Andre Rose of the Justice Center last Tuesday evening and I think it's a I guess we shouldn't feel too awful because unfortunately, these statistics are pretty common throughout the state of Alaska. But I guess for me, when I look at something like this and I think for Joel and all of us in the field. And by the way, I really want to thank Chief Vanguard because he's an amazing supporter of our efforts in this community. I think for me, this tells me we have a lot of work ahead of us and we're going to need everyone to do this. And we need you as leaders. And a proclamation like this is very powerful. This will be posted in our shelter for the victims, for the women and the children to see the support that they get from you as leaders. And it's really critical to them. But we'll be calling upon you in the future here to get together and sit down together and see what can we do as a community? Because this is Ketchikan. And one thing Dr. Rose said, don't be tempted to compare us to anyone else. Just this is our community. And he said the total number of participants represent about 10% of the women in this community. And the methodology, we need to point out, it was a phone survey, cell phone, landline. So there were a lot of women that weren't reached or weren't able to be reached. Also, it was English only. So if someone spoke another language, they couldn't participate in the survey. So basically, he said to us that evening, this is very conservative. But I want to share that there are a lot of good people doing a lot of good work here. Keela Gateway, Ketchikan Indian Community, Wish, a lot of people from the community, from a lot of different places. And I want to share that we have services available to women. There's more that goes on in the shelter than a safe place to live. We do legal advocacy. We help women find resources to get back on their feet with their families. We help the children. We have children's program because the children are traumatized. It's a very holistic approach to helping people heal and get on with their lives. And so, and we appreciate the support because we get a lot of support from you and we thank you for that.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is Red Ribbon, Red Ribbon. Ribbon Week, apologize. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse in the nation have reached epidemic stages. Whereas it is imperative that a visible and unified prevention education effort by the community members is launched to eliminate demand for drugs. Whereas a national red ribbon campaign often offers citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, and no illegal use of legal drugs. Whereas a national red ribbon campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st. Whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during the week-long campaign. Now therefore be resolved that I, Lou Williams, the third mayor of the city of Ketchikan, Alaska, do hereby proclaim that October 23rd through 31st, 2013, as Red Ribbon Week. And encourage its citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but all year long, making a visual statement that we are strongly committed to have a drug-free city. Is there anybody here who
Great.
Good evening. I'm Renee Schofield, owner of TSS and also the chair of the Substance Abuse Task Force, which is a division, a committee of the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition. Those committees, all of them, from homelessness to the domestic violence to Substance Abuse Task Force, all nine of them will tell you that substance abuse impacts everything, every aspect of their committees. Also, Chief Vanguard comes to our meetings and supports us with data and information and helps us. So that's, you're participating in that already. But this also means a great deal to us because as leaders of the community, it's important that we start here. It starts with each one of you saying, as the leader, we believe that we should reduce substance abuse and help the people who want to go to treatment have access to that treatment. We've got great resources here. And so by acknowledging this week as a national participation, we have that opportunity to step up and do something. So I encourage you, the week of the 23rd, to start wearing some red ribbons on your shirt and show up and be the leaders that you are. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, that brings us down to persons to be heard. I'm Louise Kern. Come on up.
Thank you. I'm Louise Kern, 3460 Denali. And thank you for letting me come quickly because I'm working and I escaped for a little while to do this. Technology being what it is, I have a slideshow for you, but it's a keynote. And it's on an Apple. Your machine doesn't have a dongle that will fit into my computer, so I cannot show you the slideshow. But I can pass the computer and tell you what you're looking at if you'd like to do that. When, there are about 15 slides, so you want to run through them so you can see what they all are. When well, when I moved to Denali Street, there was no way to get from our section of Denali to Carlinia Road except going down Buren and all the way around. Then the stream bed was filled in. A house was built on one side and a lot was left on the other, and it was there for a while. And because we enjoyed the freedom of not having a neighbor right next door, we purchased that lot as a building lot. And I paid taxes on it for a long time. Then the drainage situation changed. My personal thought is all the building on the uphill side changed the drainage without corrective measures. And water came pouring down that area. There was a landslide. You all know this. It was a mess. And apparently still a little bit of a mess. When that happened, the city engineers came and they wanted to change the pipe in our lot, although we felt there was nothing wrong with our pipe. They wanted to do that. They were going to put the pipe along the lot line between our lot and our neighbors, the Olivers, next door. And we gave them permission to access the lot and do that. Then it was not put there. It was put totally on our lot. Then a while later, there was a problem with the pipe. They came and repaired it. And now they're saying we would like some easement. Well, of course, there's always that, I think it's 10 feet from your lot line that you have to not build. And the pipe is within that amount and it's possible to access it. They're asking now for 25, 20 or 25 feet of easement on a 50-foot lot. And so what I have is some pictures of what that means on the lot. They're taking almost half the lot for easement on a building lot that should be a building lot. I understand my uphill neighbor has given 15-foot easement and is allowed to build right at that 15-foot line if he chooses to. But because there's a house on the other side, we get to give a whole lot more of our property as an easement. And I just don't think that's right. I want you to think about that as you receive your presentation tonight. You know, most cities put their drainage down their streets. They put pipes in the streets and correct the drainage that way, not through lots. This was something going on in Ketchikan forever. It happened. Hopefully, that's going to change. But meanwhile, I really feel strongly that you need to consider people's property, people's rights, and not say, oh, you're not using that lot. We'll just take 20 feet of it. Because it really shouldn't work that way. And I'd be glad to entertain any questions while you're looking at my slideshow. You can see, it's an amazing amount of property that is being asked for.
Thank you for coming and explaining to us, especially with the pictures.
Well, I'm sorry that I Katie told me that the projector would be available, but I didn't think the dongle would be a problem.
I didn't realize you had an Apple.
And the nice gentleman said that they'd let me use theirs with my thumb drive, but they're using PowerPoint and I'm using Keynotes. Technology is helpful, sort of.
Thank you, Louise.
Thank you for having me.
You bet. Our next person on the list, Bobby.
I'm Bobby McCrery, 724 Bayview. And I'm here tonight as a member or interim chairperson of the Empowering Youth Task Force, part of the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition. So you're getting lots of input tonight about youth and community things. We want to invite, no, first I'll have you introduce yourself.
I'm Diane Llewellyn, 35 Kelly Drive, and I am the unit supervisor at Ketchikan Regional Youth Facility.
So tonight, we'd like to invite your participation in this year's Challenge Day events. They're being held on November 13th and 14th. And you probably have heard a lot about Challenge Day, but just in case you haven't, it's a very interactive, valuable process for students and adults to go through, to experience compassion, positive changes. This will be the fourth year that we've presented it here in Ketchikan. It's been done with the support of the Wellness Coalition, with a lot of local businesses and funders. There may even be money from the city, and I actually don't know that. 100 students participate with 25 adults. It's a commitment for the full day. I first heard of Challenge Day in 2007, and I actually went down to Daly City, California to participate as an adult volunteer. And that high school was primarily Hispanic, African-American, Asian, with a very small minority of Caucasians. A lot of gang problems, a lot of strife and angst and anger and emotions within that school. And I was astonished at what one day could do with a group of 100 students. Forgiving each other, being able to hug, being able to connect and talk. Just incredible. And so a few years later, we got it started here, and it's an extremely valuable program. So we would like to say to you as elected officials, if you have the opportunity to participate, it will make a big difference to those students, teachers, and parents who are there. It shows that the leadership of our community really cares about our kids and their futures. And there's also opportunities, and Diane will talk about this, to volunteer.
Each day of Challenge Day runs from 7:15 a.m. to approximately 3:30. It's the whole day. And if you participate in Challenge Day, they need you there for the whole day. You don't even leave for lunch. You have lunch with the kids. You get school lunch with the kids. But that's a really important part of the day, actually. They're also looking for volunteers to help with setting up the evening before. And the day of checking in participants and breaking down after the workshop. And I just wanted to share, I've done this, I think, every year. And I ask to go every year because the first year, they sent me and oh, it's some, you're going to go talk to kids about bullying. So I got all dressed up and tried to look real official. And it was nothing like what I expected. It's a day of just letting out your inner child and playing with the kids. And but what it's teaching is, or showing is, the kids and us, what it feels like to be bullied, the effects that it has, and how everybody has those feelings. You know, you're not alone. That's the important thing, is that kids understand that they're not alone, that the cool kids and the not-so-cool kids, you know, they all experience these things. And it's a very emotional day. It's a lot of fun. It's high energy. And I think especially in light of this this domestic, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little nervous.
No, I think you're done.
Domestic violence survey that we just had. It's really important to see, you know, bullying is a part of that. And I just want to share, every single year that I've done this, by the end of the day, you know, the kids will always say, oh, everybody cries and everything. But by the end of the day, there's an opportunity where kids will get up and they are able to make amends. And you will see kids from, you know, I don't want to, the cool group or whoever. They will get up and they have to specifically pick out somebody. They can't, you can't just make a blanket apology. But they will pick out somebody that they have victimized maybe over the years or recently and make an apology. And they come up and they, you know, at least they're supposed to shake hands, you know. The kid that's been picked on can choose to accept or not, and that's okay. But usually, they end up hugging, you know, and it's like high school boys hugging each other. And it's just, it's one of the most incredible experiences I think that you could ever see. And having you guys show up, not just as city council members, but just as adults and people, adults especially, they go, oh, these kids, they don't care what adults, they don't understand. But you break up into small groups and you really bond with these kids. And it's so important. It's just, it's been one of the most amazing things I've ever participated in. And I hope that my boss will let me go back and do it again this year, too. So I encourage you all to, if you have the time to do it, sign up for it, let other people know. I guess I forgot, the contacts, the first day, November 13th, is going to be at K-HI. And the number there is 225-9815. It's extension 214. And you want to contact the librarian, Catlin Jacobson. And the 14th is going to be at Shawan Bar. And you want to contact Dina Smith at 228-7200. And I just encourage everybody, it's a wonderful, wonderful experience.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Bob. All right, those are the only two people that signed up on the list. Is there anybody else here who wants to address the council tonight? See you then. We'll move ahead. That brings us down to Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to consent?
Your Honor, move second.
Moved in second. I don't think I had anything else to add unless somebody else wanted to add something. Adam Clerk, can you read the items?
Approval of minutes, regular meeting of October 3rd, 2013, and special meetings of October 7th, 2013. Declaration of surplus vehicles, agreement for joint use of KPU system poles, GCI communications, ordinance number 131722, amending chapter 11.12, telecommunications service and rates of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, first reading, and exempting the procurement of annual maintenance services for the IPTV middleware system from competitive bidding Minerva.
Anybody have a question? Go ahead, Bob.
On the telecommunications stuff, I see that we're doing some changing around of the rates and stuff. To the average homeowner with a bundle, is that going to change their monthly bill dramatically?
Ed Cushing, Division Manager, KPU Telecommunications, no. This is really, for the most part, cleanup of language. It eliminates a couple of products that we no longer offer, particularly, specifically off-premise extensions for business residential customers. It consolidates some internet rates that previously were listed in the tariff as two different moving parts. It simply combines the two moving parts for simplicity's sake. It adds, I believe it adds a trip charge for customers who request the option for us to come out and fix something that may in fact be the customer's. So, but as it relates to monthly recurring rates, no, there's no increase in rates.
So does that trip charge, if I have something that I wanted to add to my service, there'll be a trip charge?
No. That's under a completely separate
Thanks a lot.
Subcharges. You're welcome.
Call the roll, please.
Harris.
Hi.
Zingy. Seibertson.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Carlson.
Olson.
Bergeron.
Hi.
Okay, that passes seven nothing. Brings us down to unfinished business, which we have none. Brings us to new business, 7A. One, Orlando Project Area Drainage Design Presentation. Take it away. Yeah.
Good evening. I'm just going to make quick introductions. My name's Aaron Christie from Dow H. Cam, project manager on a number of water sewer storm design projects that we're doing for the city of Ketchikan. Here to give a brief presentation, probably about 10 minutes or so, on where we're at with the storm drainage project in the Carolina area drainage. Here to give the bulk of that presentation will be Brad Malisiuk, our hydrologist, also from Dow H. Cam.
Thank you. So as you know, Dow H. Cam's been working on a number of projects around the area. And the Carlinia area is a little bit different than the others in that there's some significant flooding and drainage issues throughout the Carlinia area that we hope to improve throughout all the other projects. So what you're looking at here is, I guess, the projected schedule of improvements. So the purple is the 2011 projects, which we're mostly currently working on. And then in the blue are 2013 to 15, as they were currently scheduled at that time for future projects. The dashed black line is existing storm drain, and then the kind of dashed blue line is Holy Creek. So as many of you might be aware, some of these storm drains have caused some problems in the past. This is some flooding from September 2012. There's an inlet grate that was actually clogged with some debris. And all the water coming down the hillside from that Carlinia area actually ended up going through the landing parking lot.
Is that particular inlet the responsibility of the landing restaurant? It's on their property?
That particular inlet is on the landing property, correct.
And so it wasn't necessarily a pipe failure as much as a plug break?
Correct. Again, here's the drive aisle between the two buildings there at the landing, the same flood. This is not the first time this has happened. It's a debris issue. So you know, this project is not just that one particular area. So part of the concerns that we've had is that there's some unknowns at the pipe, especially uphill of the landing, not particularly the one that was shown in the previous slide that was clogged. There's multiple projects there without an overall plan. So when we show the 2011 to 2015, there's many projects within there that currently there's no comprehensive area plan for that. It's just kind of been kind of fit together over time. There's pipes placed outside the right-of-way. Some of them under homes. Some of them, it's kind of a risk issue. It's a maintenance issue. They're not able to be maintained by the city staff. Right now, the flows can't be added to Holy Creek without further analysis. We're not quite sure, you know, there's been some concepts in the past that say, oh, you know, there's flooding downstream. We'll just keep putting all the water in Holy Creek. And as I pointed out there, the hospital covert was also placed without a FEMA permit, not showing the water going to Holy Creek, and that's been an issue in the present year. So the pipe uphill of the landing, it's currently, it is on the property, private property. The size and condition is unknown. You can see some penetrations there bulging near the entrance and the outfall. And the remainder of the pipe's not been inspected. It's a confined space issue. We just can't send city staff or own folks down in there. There's actual over 400 feet. There's some bends. There's maybe some obstructions. And there's some specialized folks that actually do just that. The pipe is really deep. Some of it's over 20 feet. And as you all are probably well aware, there's some rock retaining walls, some rocky walls there. There's some new parking areas. There's a roller that goes up and around. It's on private property. So, you know, originally, when we were going through the project, you know, there was thoughts of opening this up. It's, it would be too expensive. So what we'd like to do is actually go in and re-line that pipe. We're working with some people that that's what they do. And unfortunately, because we don't know the condition of the pipe and what's down in there, and there's no record drawings of how it was built, we need a little bit more investigation to confirm the feasibility of re-lining the pipe. to confirm the feasibility of re lining the pipe. So, some of the work that we've done to date, uh, we've done, uh, many site inspections, topographic survey, been now and working, uh, with Seth and his staff. We've done, uh, some geotech investigations. We've submitted thirty-five percent design plans, specifications, and estimate. Most of our recommendations are actually taking these storm drain pipes and these drainage pipes that you saw previously, that a lot of the ones in the dashed lines, and actually bringing them out and putting them into the road right-of-way. We're doing that to, you know, with Tim Baronoff and Anderson and Carlana, um, for the reasons stated, you know, previously. You would have control over, we no longer need a drainage estimate if we want to go in there and it's maintainable. One of the things we are doing is we are, uh, using plastic pipe, which is the CPEP, instead of the corrugated metal, CMP. Uh, there's increased capacity. Most of those roads have the slope. But we can actually keep a smaller pipe, which is more cost-effective by going with the plastic pipe. Uh, we're actually looking at, uh, adding headwalls and trash racks to reduce maintenance and some of the issues that have occurred in, in other areas, and also reduce risk with, uh, there's been some kids that we know that play in those culverts over there. So this is the same, uh, kind of photo that we showed you before. And those are the culverts that we are actually looking at getting rid of. So originally, those were looked at improving, increased size, um, going in there. So you have the, the church property, uh, is this one right here, Baronoff and Anderson. Um, there's, right here is actually, uh, where there's a house that's built on top of the creek. So we're actually trying to get, um, many of these drains away from the homes and out into the right-of-way where we can, where they can be maintained. So if you actually look, what we've act, what we've done is overlaid, um, the city's future plans of development and road projects with some storm drain improvements. They try to facilitate that. The one interesting piece of it all, and, and we were out there today again, is this pipe right here. And, uh, where the flooding occurs is actually down right at the entrance to the landing. But the one right upstream is the one that we know that there's, there's some bends in there, and we're not quite sure what the, the, uh, condition of the pipe is. And that's the one that was mentioned. So our proposed plan, um, is to, uh, contract with a company called Extreme Access for the confined space issues to determine the condition of the pipe, complete a hydrologic and hydraulic analysis. And this, this analysis will be able to be used, uh, on all the projects within the whole Carlana drainage area in the future. You know, it, whether or not it's done now or in ten years, um, we'd be able to know every single time someone could refer back, whether it's Dow H Cam or another company, refer back and say, okay, it's a eighteen-inch pipe and it's going here. And these are going to approximately be the inverts, because we know it, it all fits with what's out there. Those guys did the survey and everything else. Uh, we'd like to include Holy Creek and do a, a study in Holy Creek. Time and time again, the, the question comes whether or not you can add water, what the condition and, and what's going on there. And we're going to summarize that in a report or a drainage memorandum. Um, so overall, we're going to have, when we're finished, our comprehensive storm drain plan that prioritizes the improvements based on what's out there now, um, and the current projects, funding. And then we'll be able to review our existing plans and ones that are there now and say, you know, are there any changes that are necessary? That is the pipe that caused the flooding, that was the debris issue. We went out there today, it's, it's changed up a little bit. Still not perfect, but better than it was. Any questions?
So what are you going to have the, I guess, the plan all done for the Carlana area where we can start getting some ideas of costs on the total, um, concept?
And, and right now, we're actually under contract, uh, we've nearly completed our scope of services that we're under contract with the city right now, is to complete thirty-five percent design and geotech and survey. And so, you know, what Seth has asked us to do is, what is it going to take to finish this? Um, we've given him an idea, kind of summarized it, uh, here. And I think what Seth is looking for is, is, uh, just direction from the city on how we, how to proceed. Do we want to continue with this project, um, or is it, or is it over?
Well, you're at thirty-five, but, um, can you flip back, uh, um, a slide? The Belmough Conference Storm Drain Plan for the Carlana area, is that included in what you're doing now, or going to be included in what you're doing now, or are you going to need more money to do that?
Correct, right. So we, we had money to go up to thirty-five percent, now that we have a better idea of what's needed to complete the project.
So this is what you need?
That's right.
Okay. So how much are you going to need to finish this?
We haven't put fees together yet.
Come on up, Seth.
Good evening, council, Seth Brackey, Assistant Public Works Director. Uh, what's becan, what's apparent right now is, if you look in, in my memo to the council, estimated construction cost for the three sections of this project is over, it ranges from two-point-seven million to three-point-five million dollars. So, um, what we're really stuck with now is, it doesn't make sense to proceed with a, with a project that'll never be built. We don't want to continue to spend design money if there's no plan for construction dollars. It's just, um, so what we've laid out is, how do we deal with the property issues? How do we deal with the lack of funding? And, um, without those questions answered, we're kind of at a, at a standstill on how to proceed.
Bob?
Yeah, could you go back one more to the map? So, the area below, um, would it be Hawkins? It runs through property owners' properties, it has poor access. And then after it gets to Arnold, it goes through a, a big empty lot. And I, I think that, if I remember right, that pipe going under Carlana is twenty-five feet deep or something like that to get down to, or down Baronoff. About twenty-five foot deep, and there's dissimilar pipes in there and all kinds of stuff. A simple lining of that's not going to add anything for capacity, and we still don't know how that's going to affect the structural integrity of that. Are you going to go back? We already have problems there, probably, Phil. The area between, um, Baronoff and Arnold.
This here?
Where the, where the green goes down, I would imagine, is what we'd be looking at.
So, yeah, that's new.
That'll be new through the, down.
It could be, so, so there'd be, you know, we'd be picking up the drainage of Hawkins, Arnold, and Baronoff. There'd be some, there's some that originally is up in here that's actually what's going down. There'd be very little drainage, just localized, what's coming from these rooftops and people's yards. We would have picked it all up. Then, when we add the one in Baronoff here, we will have picked up all the water upstream. There would be no real reason, I mean, we could leave this in place and abandon it. There won't be any reason. And that all, uh, will run the main line down Anderson. Now they put it out in that, uh, there's kind of a deep trench area that'll end up going out to the same area. But what we're trying to do is have a plan, so that as these projects gradually get constructed, we don't have to start at the downstream, and you won't need, you won't have those issues. And we, we did, we saw the same, same thing that you were looking at too.
Yeah.
There's reverse grades on some things up there as well.
And I know that, uh, we had some flooding on Anderson Drive years ago, and it did some sewer damage. And right at Anderson and Hawkins, we had to replace some sewer lines. And the fill there didn't stand up to anything. You couldn't hold a bank on it, and the hole just kept growing and growing and growing. And it became very hard to manage, and I would be afraid as you go down that road, you're probably going to hit some of that same kind of stuff. I don't know if it's an old silky creek bed or what it was, but it was pretty poor material to work with.
So these projects were, this drainage were low, and, you know, sometimes water sewer. And what we were trying to say here is that, you know, we'd like to include this storm drain. If it were bigger, um, you know, the risk of having these homes with these creeks running underneath them where, you know, seventy-foot spurs can't get to them, the storm drain underneath homes and in lots and back lots where people, their property, as we've heard tonight, we're just trying to build anything out into the road, and that's really what we're trying to do right now. The next steps for this project.
And if you found that you could add extra capacity to Holy Creek, would that change the design here? Would you think maybe about trying to pick more water off at the, uh, Denali level maybe, or, or something like that, and run over to Holy and dump it into the creek basin?
It may. The, the important thing is to keep watching this, this culvert down here at, at the Peace Health Hospital. Um, that's one that I've worked on because of it, Seth. And the design is correct, but there's, there's some theme issues. We need to watch those as well. What we try to do is just balance the water to where it is now. No one else, we're not quite sure. There's, there's been some studies before that. Uh, repeatedly, just keep putting pipes in there, Holy. But we, we would definitely check that.
Brad, let me.
Now, the, the pipe issue at the, um, uh, Ketchikan Hospital site is going to be addressed through construction, because we're going to have to do some work in that area. Is that correct, Carl, if you remember?
I would have to defer to Cliff.
So, it, it's all, uh, what, what we're proposing right now is, at thirty-five percent, to take some of this drainage, uh, that currently heads down through here, what we call the east branch of Hilltop. And we're proposing right now to redirect that to Holy Creek at thirty-five percent design. So, to, in order to do, to do that, we'll have to survey Holy Creek and do a, a hydrologic analysis of Holy to ensure that this culvert can pass that water with what they call a no-rise analysis. Um, so, right now, to move forward, that's part of the work that would need to be done. Uh, so we're trying to take some of the water and get it over here. So it's kind of a combination approach. Uh, what we call west branch Hilltop will route to Anderson and then down Anderson right-of-way. So we get out of the backyards and the, um, on private property and get that to here. But we're still stuck from here down, as the only route downhill is through the Hilltop area, what we call lower Hilltop or just Hilltop through the landing. So we didn't feel like there was a way to get west Hilltop, west branch over to Holy. So you see this kind of a combination, uh, combination approach.
Yeah.
What, you mentioned that the culvert down by the hospital had not received FEMA approval when it was placed? Does that impact your ability to run these potential other routes into it?
Right, exactly. So in order, in order for us to actually do this reroute, so instead of, uh, here, bring this water to Holy, we're going to have to do a analysis of the water that we're adding and the existing culvert and say, okay, this culvert can pass this amount of additional water and get that approved.
And then fix that approval that wasn't received in the first place? Will that bring it up to date or?
They, they call it a map revision if it doesn't. So we just have to show that it didn't flood. Currently, there's, there's not the documentation that we expect to work. So that would be all part of it.
Well, we have a big mess here.
Go ahead. I live right here. It's a great spot to live when it comes to water. I watched Community Connections, that new facility get built. They put a catch basin in each corner and then had to add another one where a eighteen-inch wide underground stream was. So, we need to do something, because the amount of water that's coming under these properties in that area is amazing. And the, the potential for destruction, I think of any of it, especially of the areas coming down with Sab. We know how wet Alder, Alder Park gets. We need to start doing something in this area. Otherwise, we're going to, we're going to lose houses and properties. And the whole entire reason is that we didn't have any in, in the works in the first place. And construction was just, at least for the storm su, for the storm systems, that was just not, really non-existent, wasn't thought out. So I guess I'm disclosing where I live, but the other thing is, we really, we really, I really need to do something up here.
Um, Bob?
My concern is, is you put that straight length of pipe in, the water's probably going to come faster. And I'm concerned that that section under the Hilltop might not handle the load. And we have no, no good access there, that's for sure. And I don't know what the state has, because they extended the outfall when they built the parking lot in Ferry Terminal area, and I think there was some issues there. So when the tide comes in and backs it up, then we're going to have water in the street anyway, if the water's coming faster. And then they build up further, clear more land, runoff comes quicker yet. So, um, where I understand that we need to get them into the streets, somehow we have to disperse that. I know down south, they do water retention projects and all, to kind of slow it down so it filters out quicker and stuff. And we don't have that opportunity here because it's such a short area. But I'm just concerned that that's going to be the weak point. We could do all this work up here, and then we could put added issues with that landing area.
I, I appreciate that comment, that's a good comment. Uh, what we're hoping is we'll be able to take enough, uh, flow off of he, off the east branch and route to Holy, that that would, we'd still have plenty of capacity, um, within Hilltop. So we're taking some of the flow that's currently going here. I'd say fifteen, twenty percent of the water that's flowing under there right now, and under this plan, we're taking it over to Holy. So that would reduce, reduce the amount of water that's going underneath the landing now.
So what they do on that pipe that's, uh, down just above the landing is they actually, they take, there's a couple of things they can do. They can put a plastic liner in the pipe, which can make the, the flow through that pipe more efficient. Or they can take a giant sock, and they stick this sock in the pipe and blow it up so that it compresses against the pipe. And it's made, uh, it's kind of an epoxy with fiberglass in it. And it actually, some of them add some, uh, structural support as well. And then they cure it with UV light, cut the end off, and then you actually have a structural pipe inside the other pipe. But the pipes have more capacity after that than before, because you've changed the roughness of the pipe. So what we, you know, I mean, the biggest thing we need to know is, what does that pipe look like? Because it's buried so far right now, and it's got some weird bends and stuff in it. So we, we need to just put somebody inside it.
Can we use tractor cameras for some of that?
So we, we've looked at that. Uh, we believe that the, the pipe, basically, there's a manhole about right here. But we believe that the pipe takes several large dives, that we wouldn't be able to get the tractor over and down. So the pipe's big enough that we can get, uh, a person trained in confined space entry to go in there, and he'd be roped off, uh, be able to take lots of photos, lock, lots of documentation, wear a GoPro on his head the whole time. But the issue is, is we have to get permission from the property owner just to enter that pipe.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yeah.
And I, I think that really comes to the heart of the matter. Projects that we have under consideration are, are the top priorities that came under that. Storm drainage, uh, master plan we submitted a couple of years ago. These are all rated as immediate need. The question is, recognizing there is that immediate need and the potential for additional Hawkins-Denali incidents, do you want to bite off what essentially is the private storm drainage components in a number of these systems? Say, the city's going to step up and, and, and take the financial responsibility. And, and if the answer is yes, then we can proceed and start the process of, you know, furthering the design, going out and looking for grant funding, uh, and trying to put packages together. If the answer's no, that you have no interest, and you're willing to take the risk, then, you know, there's no point moving the design forward.
Well, I think, um, we need to get the design at a hundred percent or whatever you guys are going for. We can look at phasing it, or we can go for grants, or, you know, we could even talk LID. Uh, but I think we can't hide from the problem. There's the problem, we're going to have to deal with it, and how we deal with, um... There's the problem, we're going to have to deal with it and how we deal with the, I mean, I wish this would have all been developed where we had plans and everything, but we don't, and so we're just dealing with what we've been dealt. So, I'm hoping the council would want to move forward. Matt?
I, I disclose and I just want to know if I can make further comments. No, I just, that's all I wanted to say.
That's fine, okay.
Thank you.
Is there any council members that don't want to continue? Bob?
Well, you know, we just heard comments tonight from the public. We went up and did some emergency repairs and then ended up doing a construction project where they felt they were told that the property, that the drain line would go on the property line, and then, you know, that would probably be within the two ten-foot setbacks, and apparently ended up all on their property line. And I can understand them not wanting to give up twenty-five foot of a sixty-foot line. I wouldn't, or whatever it is, yeah. But it drastically reduces their ability to do what they want with that lot in the future. And I don't know that the city can buy their way out of by purchasing all these lots. I don't know if that's the best avenue either. Because somebody has in the past failed to do something right under a lot or to think of pill change or whatever it is, I'm not sure how we deal with that. And I don't have a clear understanding how we're going to go in and deal with private properties, especially private properties that don't want to participate. You're going to build a real nice mine and then just chop it off right here and look at whatever it is? That doesn't sound very good.
Well, we're going to have to come up with a solution with the, I mean, there's two property owners that have got concerns, correct? All of them have signed up at two?
Talking about the Hawkins.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. And I understand her, their concern on the property, how much we're asking, and we need to continue talking and working on that, but there's problems there. And that's, you know, I know people hate to hear this, but these kind of projects, I mean, and how we're going to fund them, I mean, these are just what I think LIDs were made for, and we may not ask for the whole bunch, but I think it needs to be a part of the equation is looking into what kind of costs we can do with that. The, the council doesn't seem to have an objection, Carl. You got enough direction? Move to...
I haven't heard money not, not to go forward.
Yeah, it's on me.
Anything that we do will have to come back.
Oh, I know. Matt?
I, I have a question. I just want a clarification. The, the purple section on the, right there, is that private or public right now? That's all private.
So, so you're correct. And we've worked with Seth, and if you look at the two purple sections, those are the areas that we've recommended just a minute ago. Okay, so now we no longer have to deal with the, those systems we're going to do.
Thank you. The lower light blue that's right between the two purple, that's on private too, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Everything else is public?
At this point, except for this one.
Except for that, right. And that whole ravine, which used to be a, I mean, that was Anderson's built on a ravine. It's just backfilled in. And that whole ravine then is now private. And when they just, it's within the last ten years, I think, that went from being public access to private property. Were there any easements written in when that was given over?
Councilman Olson, I'm sorry, which specific area traded hands?
This lot, right here, was the continuation of Anderson down to First Street, and it went over into this property owner, I believe this property owner and that property owner. Were there any easements when they took control of that public access?
No, there are no drainage easements through that area right now.
Okay. I was just kind of curious because I, I really understand what Bob's talking about, but I also know we have to get something taken care of, and the more that we can stick to public, it just makes it easier for long-term for us. But I just need a clarification, but I completely support moving forward to a hundred percent of this point, so we're planning.
And the option of putting more water in the Hoadley Creek area, that really has to happen below Bearinoff, is that correct? Because there's a culvert there that when you design for a hundred-year flood, may be pushed pretty hard.
Go ahead, Brad.
The option that we played out is to, to discharge the water below Bearinoff.
Are there any events in these you can do to help with flow and volume?
No, right now, we haven't even gotten that far.
All right. I think we've covered it. Thank you, gentlemen.
We should have sent it on to your property.
Yeah.
I'll just go Kevin's return.
Yeah, all right. Let's move on to seven eight-two financial and compliance audit for the year ending December thirty-one, two thousand thirteen. Got two motions, we can go out the bit or we can hire on our local firm, Meekham Richardson. It's a pleasure of the council. Matt?
I move the city council authorized finance director to negotiate a contract with Meekham Richardson and Company for the financial and compliance audit for the city of Ketchikan for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand thirteen. Said contract to be submitted to the city council for formal consideration.
Moved in second. Anybody have a dress up, Matt, or anything?
I just, I think right now with the change that the city is going through with our financial package, it would be, not be in our best interest to change auditors since then we're familiar with where we're going from and where we're going to.
Jan?
I just wanted to get clarification that, in the memo from Mr. Newell, it says, based on inquiries made of the local public accounting firms capable of performing municipal audits, only Meekham Richardson and Company had expressed an interest. Does that mean that we actually contacted local firms around town and then they just don't have the capacity?
Heard it.
Bob?
I actually appreciate the fact that that was, I mean...
Oh, yes. I, I had a habit of, of calling all the local firms, and I haven't done it in the last couple of years because they finally told me that you don't have to call us anymore, which is not ready to do governmental audits. We'll call you when we're ready.
Okay, good. Well, I appreciate that you have looked into that.
All right, call the roll.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Hi.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Hi.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
All right, that passed a seven, and that brings us down to item seven eight-three, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fifteen, Alaska statewide transportation improvement plan step amendment number eight. I have a motion.
Honorable? Go ahead, Bob.
I move the city council direct the city manager to file such comments with the Department of Transportation and Public Facilities on amendment number eight of the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fifteen statewide transportation improvement plan is determined appropriate by the city council.
Move in second. Bob, do you want to add anything?
Um, there's a lot of comments and different things going on in here, and I think that there's something that Carl will probably want to relate to us as we go through this. But one of the things I looked at is the tunnel down here, and we talked about it being a historical landmark and enhanced lighting for warmer natural light, installed a period-type lighting fixtures. I don't know if that was much necessary as maybe we should look at some reduced energy-consuming type lights in that tunnel to add better lighting, because they are going to be replacing the hand railing or walkway railing and it has to be traffic safe in there or something. I don't know what it's going to be to be more attractive, but, and noise management, I don't know if that's necessary for as sure as that tunnel is and stuff. And then I, I don't know about the artistic element of that. We never had art hung in that before. Usually with paint on the walls, now it's about it. So, I'm a little concerned that we might go a little too far when we start doing those things and looking at the historic aspect of it. I think the tunnel is, is very usable and needed, and, but I think that durability and lighting and safety is probably the bigger issue that we had.
Jan?
The one aspect where they discussed the bike path, I think, could be addressed because it is really dangerous to ride a bike through there. You can't ride on the sidewalk, and then when you ride out into the main traffic area, there's not a whole lot of room left. So, that might, you know, it's not aesthetically useful, but I think it might be something that should at least be considered, like the lighting and other things.
Bob? The problem was add, I mean, if you tried to add another lane in there, right now, when you take a container van through there, because of the arch, it gets really close to the one side, so they go right down the middle.
Bad in being on a bike with that.
Yeah, so, I mean, they probably could get off their bike and walk it through the tunnel and then get back on it because...
Or right around the tunnel.
I think when you start shifting it over to the side, there are some of those higher loads that we could end up with an issue.
Anybody else? Carl, anything you have, a concern you want to address?
Jan, I just would reiterate, Mr. Mayor, that given that repairs along the stretch of road between the tunnel and Tatsutas, looks like it's going to be postponed. Recommend that the council reiterate that DOT really needs to do something about the wash boarding happens.
The what?
Federal building.
The what?
Wash boarding.
Oh.
The pavement?
Yeah. The, what you call it, and you'll be adding that to a letter?
That would be my recommendation.
That's a good one. Bob?
We kind of did something out in, what is it, Front and Dock where we were paving on Dock, and we said, we're going to go ahead and do, talk to the state, and I think, Cliff, did we end up, I know that Kara is the one that kind of caught that, but we ended up doing the oversight or engineering or inspecting on that something and got that intersection paved.
Correct. There are three of those we've done in the last few years, somewhat out of frustration, but we have had, have had a few working partners within the state who have been gracious enough to work with us and just make that happen.
On, on short-term for a repair, do you think we could broach that subject again with them on this particular portion of Mill Street?
Well, I'd like to say yes, but on the other ones where we've done that, we've been a big part of them. There are driveways, for instance, so we've had a vested interest in it, and it's a small area that we worked on. We're talking about a pretty substantial stretch.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't want to be discouraging in any way, but it is a pretty big undertaking. We'll gladly work with them and then contribute all we can on that, but I don't want to take over. Thanks.
Okay, Carl, you got direction? I don't think we need to vote on that. Thank you. That brings us down to number four. Easements for Hawkins Denali storm drain improvements. Do we have a motion?
Your honor, I move the city council direct staff to take such measures to acquire the remaining two easements necessary for the city to assume ownership and future maintenance responsibility of the Hawkins Denali storm water drainage improvements project as determined appropriate by the city council.
Move in second. Carl, do you have any great ideas? I know the property owners that want the forty-five thousand, and then we had, heard from Louise, is there still a way of negotiating or doing something? Do we really need that big of easement up there on the Kearns property?
Well, I'll defer to Mr. Brockie on the size of the easement relative to the other one. If the council wants me to pay forty-five thousand dollars, I certainly can do that. If they don't, short of eminent domain, I don't know how you're going to get the easement to do the property.
And how, you know, they're doing the plans now, what's the, I mean, how important is this to, how sooner, what is the strategy of getting these final two?
Does it have to happen tomorrow?
Yeah.
No. I'll be honest, Mr. Mayor, I put this on the agenda just to keep it on the council's radar. I was here over a year ago, and we haven't made any progress. And I'll talk to the city attorney, see if he has any other ideas. And we can come back. It's going to take a while, but I think we've got time. I, I just didn't want this to drop off the council's radar because in all likelihood, you're going to get into similar issues relative to the action you took just earlier tonight to the whole Hilltop drainage basin.
I understand. It's a mess and we're cleaning it up. But we could always just stop and let it all go, but I just don't think that's a good move by the council. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, for years, we've been going back on private property and accessing drainage inlets during storm events and removing leaves and sticks without trying to keep that stuff moving in the middle of the night. And as Carl's alluded to, that we haven't had much success with private owners doing their own maintenance and maintaining those. It's always kind of sketchy. I'm a little concerned about having to go through and buying pieces of property or something because we can't make out a deal. We're kind of held hostage here. And I know that we talked about doing parking stuff, but that's another piece of infrastructure that you have to maintain and cost money, and then you have a park next to an open stream and liabilities, and so there's a lot of things to think about when you're looking at these pieces of property and what you can do. I know there's a possibility of buying it and then maybe selling off the short section to the property next door and doing some more stuff like that. And I'd kind of like to know if that's a possibility before, or before we buy the property. But it is, it's a tough question, and I know we haven't moved very far on it or moved at all on it. Thank goodness, right now, we have good, good pipe in the ground and probably you're not going to be faced with a huge issue on either one of these, but I don't know what the easy answer is.
Matt? Cliff or Seth? Not yet, one of you guys up here. All, on this map that we have in our packet, the blue sections are those sections that are private property owned that you have easements for.
Correct. So, out of the nine, seven of the property owners granted easements without any fuss, just signed them, no, no money, changed hands, they just signed the easement. So, in place of brand-new pipe, brand-new structures, you know, the infrastructure investment that the city put into those properties and the fact that the city will maintain those structures now, they were willing to sign those easements over. So, I, I can't address the width of Lot Eight, of the Lot Eight easement. The reason that it doesn't go down the common property line between eight and nine is there's a sewer line in there. The sewer line goes up and drains whatever development would be on thirteen and twelve. So, that's the reason the storm drain doesn't run right down the property line. For this size and depth, twenty feet is reasonable for an easement width, so...
Now, can we get it, but ten or fifteen work, or ten?
So, in, it's interesting, there's an example in August of two thousand twelve, last year, that manhole on Lot Eight had problems, created a sinkhole, and our crews had to go in there. So, we had a flatbed, we had a compressor, we had a backhoe, and you start trying to cram those pieces of equipment in ten feet, it gets tough. So, we got to be able to get back to that manhole and work on it.
Are the owners amenable to subdividing the property and taking payment perhaps?
We're going to have to come up with something creative.
No, I, I, has that been approached yet, or are we just going to...
So, you see the struggles that we've had just in contacting the owner of Lot Eight, and we're open to negotiations or counteroffers, something that we can bring back to this body, but there just hasn't been, of course, hasn't been a response.
We can pursue that.
Throw some new ideas at it.
Yeah, I, I see this whole area as kind of the start to everything below it because there's more and more and more up here, you know, above Bailey in terms of drainage that probably hasn't been built. And at some point, we need to start somewhere where we have some ownership of some property so we can do what we want inside the ground. And I don't know if this is as good a place as any. The one thing I think that appeals to me about this is that it's not under an existing roadway, so we're not going to have to dig up a roadway to build it, if that makes sense. We don't have to worry about paving it and all that. And so, I can see this, like I said, being the development of something to capture the water above there and being our, kind of our first step in the future. I, I guess I'm more, I'm more amenable to purchasing the areas, and I don't know what that means for the, for the blue section between thirty-four fifty-one and thirty-four thirty-seven Denali. Whether, or, I mean, we have the easement, but it seems to me that at some point, we need to have something where we own so we can just do what we want on those properties. Whether, or, I mean, we have the easement, but it seems to me that at some point, we need to have something where we own, so we can just do what we want on those properties. So, I think we need to start being creative and start looking at having some ownership of some of the property up there.
Marty?
Um, the property owners that have not agreed to this, there's one you haven't been able to contact, is that it? And then, what's the other one's objection?
Uh, their proposal was for the city to purchase the lot for forty-five thousand, uh, so that was included, uh, as an offer.
That was lost.
Uh, correct, the lower Lot Three.
Right where the thing broke and flooded there. The property, there's no house on it, it's vacant. Bob?
Yeah, the, the thing is, is, um, we're probably not going to go back into these areas and do a lot of new construction. It's already been reconstructed, is that correct? There's new, there's new pipe and inlets and everything in the, in the ground already in those areas.
Correct. That is the nice part about this part, project, is we went in and everything's new.
Yeah, and so what we're trying to do is maintain access, if we should have to maintain it in the future. I believe that, uh, the one where the Lot Eight is, that particular piece of pipe is probably, what, fifteen, eighteen feet deep there, twenty feet deep?
Towards the lower side of the lot, yeah.
Yeah, it gets real deep where it goes through there, and then goes across the road. And then, um, on Lot Three, that, the inlet comes out, dumps into an open ditch, and then there's an open catch basin at the bottom, is that correct?
Uh, right, a open manhole there, at the bottom of Lot Three.
So, um, it's not like we're having to get these easements to construct a pipe right at this point. That's already constructed. But in order to maintain access for future maintenance is what we're talking about. And when you get a, a pipe that's fifteen feet in the ground, OSHA gives you standards about how wide the banks are, or what you can do to work on, and you need, you know, trench box and all kinds of stuff. And if that's twenty foot deep, it's going to be at the top. And I can see what Seth's talking about, if you did have to get access to it.
Matt? I just have one more clarification. The very top where it says number twenty-five by the Bailey Boulevard, what, that's, is that, um, the trailer court up in there?
Correct, that's a trailer number, twenty-five.
And what's, by the, the compass arrow that says north, what's the number nine?
Uh, it's an unsubdivided remainder of a lot that's actually accessed from Ohana Court.
Carl, you got some direction?
I believe so, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That brings us on, down to item seventy-five, offer of employment, museum director. Do we have a motion? Go ahead.
I move the City Council authorize the city manager to offer the position of museum director to Lacey Simpson of Ketchikan Alaska, based upon a compensation level of grade seven sixty-one step I, at an annual salary of sixty-four thousand fifty-seven dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Marty, do you want anything?
I think she'll do a real good job, even though she doesn't have the qualifications that were originally hoped for when the position was, uh, authorized. I have worked sort of with her, and I'm very impressed with her abilities.
Anybody else? Yeah?
I just wanted to say that I was pleased to see that they're looking within that department and not necessarily outside of Ketchikan, that they're willing to take someone and give them the opportunities and hopefully the training that they'll need to be up to par with that position. But I think that's certainly a good step in the right direction.
Call the room?
West, yes. Olson?
Yes.
Carlson? Burshun?
Yes.
Harris?
Hi.
Seerthson?
Yes.
Zing.
All right, that passed in seven to nothing. Brings us down to seven B, one, Ketchikan Public Utilities Drinking Water Regulatory Compliance UV Disinfection. Um, Carl, do we have a presentation, or what do you?
We do, Mr. Mayor. I could introduce Mr. Floyd Demran of CH Thumann Hill. Most of you know him. He's been here.
Before.
Numerous times.
And Vice Mayor, can we take five? One second, can we take five while he's standing up and Mary?
Can we have a comfort break?
I didn't hear what?
Take five while he's standing.
Oh, yeah, you bet.
That's what I was asking her.
Ron with CH Thumann Hill in our Anchorage office, and thank you for the invite to be here. I think I made my first presentation here about twenty years ago, and the presentation that we're doing tonight is an update of one we did in two thousand and ten about, uh, your drinking water treatment and regulations. This is a brief overview of what we're going to be covering tonight. What the regulations are, and overview of projects, timeline, oh, that just did it all by itself. Uh, and public information overview. I think it's telling me to go faster. So, um, some of the regulations, I'm not going to read every word here, but, um, as, um, as events have happened across the country, and Congress in its infinite wisdom, and with EPA and the state have decided that because some people get sick, and for example, in Milwaukee, four hundred thousand people in fact got sick on one event, and about sixty-nine people died. And some of that is what is driving our regulations. And, um, ADC notified, uh, KPU in two thousand and five of a non-compliance with one of those regulations, DDP is the disinfection by-product rule, and that's, um, main characteristic there, or by-product is what's termed a halocetic acid, and the little five means they measure five different types of acids. So, um, KPU is very proactive with the state. We've had multiple meetings, lots of communications with them. And, um, also, the new rule emerged partly because of this event in Milwaukee, and, um, for tightened treatment, and communities like Ketchikan, Junos, Sitka, Cordova, Kodiak, and in Alaska that don't filter their water, we're told, as, as is New York City, Seattle, and Portland, and other large communities that don't filter their water, you need two disinfectants. And so that was the purpose of the UV project that was going forward, so cover that here. We began design work in two thousand and six, design was completed in oh eight, facilities were constructed and completed, I must have a timer on here, um, in two thousand and eleven. And then, this is a very precious letter I have right here. We, we worked with the state on many, many occasions, and worked with them, both for Ketchikan and Kodiak, and finally in July, got approval that Ketchikan could actually take credit for the UV reactors. And due to the timing of that letter and several projects going on, rather than converting to chloramination and adding ammonia to the water now, that's going to happen in the spring. One of that reason, one of the reasons is public safety, that when you convert over to chloramination and you add ammonia to the water, you need to do a lot of hydrant flushing, and if you do that, say in November as an example, you have the, you run the risk of forming ice on streets and sidewalks, and public safety is a really big deal for all of us, obviously. So, most of you are familiar with, um, where we are. This is Shornbar Road. I think the prison would be off to the far left. There is an ammonia storage, ammonia facility on the left, the Bear Valley Reservoir, the White Square. At the time when we made the slide, the facility wasn't constructed. It's there now, is where UV disinfection occurs, soda ash is fed, and then off to the far right is where chlorine is added. The regulation said if you don't want to filter your water, and if you're granted a filtration avoidance, which Ketchikan was roughly twenty years ago, two disinfectants, and every one in Alaska is using chlorine and UV. Another disinfectant that will work very effectively is ozone, but creating ozone on a large facility such as yours, when you're putting out many, many million gallons per day, would be a very expensive facility to construct, maintain, and operate. So, UV is, uh, is the second disinfectant of choice for all of the communities in Alaska that don't filter. So, this little, um, schematic cartoon shows you a schematic of your water system from Ketchikan Lakes on the far left, the tunnel system to the hydro plant, and, um, use of chlorine is the first little rectangle there. Then, middle is where your UV reactors are, and we also add soda ash to the water, and that increases the pH, which reduces the porosity of your water, which is important. Because there's another rule that Ketchikan Public Utilities has to comply with, and that's the lead and copper rule. If you increase the pH, you reduce the amount of lead that comes into your water from plumbing fixtures in your house mainly. You don't have a lead and copper problem with your raw water, but if you have a brass fixture in your house, that can leach lead into the water. Then you have ammonia injection, which I say will occur next spring, and your chlorine contact tank, and then your water goes on to town. A little bit of regulatory timeline is a review that we did three years ago. We're way over here now, approaching two thousand and fourteen, and two thousand and fourteen is a strategic year in that, um, both a more restrictive by-product rule has to be complied with, and you have to disinfect for cryptosporidium, which is the organism that made all those people sick in Milwaukee and killed some sixty or seventy people. We're on target, we're being in compliance, and I think, uh, Carl and John and others should be congratulated. At Ketchikan, started off early, very proactive with the state of Alaska, got the facility constructed. Little bit of foot dragging by the state, but we have the approval letter now, and we're good to go. So, public information overview, there was a process that was put forth in Ketchikan, thinking we were going to add ammonia to the water a little bit, uh, earlier. And, um, because the state, um, wasn't able to give the approval, that was delayed, and so public information will be repeated. So, why is drinking water disinfected? I don't think I have to tell you. Millions of people were killed before chlorine was added to water. It's, it's common practice now, um, across the entire US and Alaska, lots of health benefits of, um, disinfecting your water. About adding ammonia and forming dechloramines, the reason that that's being proposed for Ketchikan is because your water has organics in it, that when it combines with chlorine, it forms those byproducts, and you are over the regulatory limit. As soon as you add ammonia to the water and convert from free chlorine to chloramines, those byproducts stop forming. That gets you into compliance, okay? So, someone, a few people in Ketchikan, we had public meetings, raised some concerns, and they said, well, is it safe? It's been, it's been done for ninety years, over sixty-eight million people across the US are drinking chloraminated water, especially in the southeast part of the US where the water is warmer, but a community like San Francisco, if you've been there, you're drinking chloraminated water, taking a shower with it. EPA expects more communities to switch over to, uh, chloramines, and, um, chloraminated water meets all standards for safety. It's safe for people, safe for animals, you can read the slide there. Um, there are some sensitive groups, and, um, we covered, uh, previously, and we can briefly view tonight if someone's on dialysis. There needs to be a filter change on that dialysis machine, and if you have an aquarium or terrarium, it could be a filter change.
You mean to filter change on the aquariums, it's have a gigantic one. To a new type of filter?
Yes, a different type of filter.
Okay.
On the tank or on your water supply?
On the tank.
For an aquarium?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, on the, just on the aquarium itself, not for the whole house? Is that, was that the question, Councilman Mills?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just on, just for the aquarium?
Okay.
Or the terrarium? Um, let's see, um, whoops, I'm going the wrong direction. Sorry, this thing was advancing on me here. So, back in two thousand and ten, we knew of one dialysis patient. We haven't done a new survey. It's a very easy change. It's very common across the country that people that do dialysis know about these filter changes. Um, same thing, like I said, aquarium, terrarium, uh, pet shops, or people that you order through the internet, they'll the internet, they'll know what you need. There's tablets, there's drops also, if someone doesn't want to do filters. Cruise ships, there's a question, it came on that in 2010, we called some of the cruise ship companies, they have a standard operating procedure, because they work in a wide variety of communities and get their water, boy, what's going on with me here? And so, we don't view that as a problem, of what they told us, I said, what they do is they'll just add more chlorine, and they'll convert back to free chlorine on their ships. They have a system that automatically does that, is what was explained to us when we called the people in Florida where some of their headquarters are. We will be, when this change is made, we'll be continuing to work with those folks. We've heard over time that there are some plumbing parts that may disintegrate a little bit faster over time with chloramines, but plumbing shops, once that change is made, is they can get a different colored rubber part or gasket that's resistant to chloramination or chloramines. If someone is manufacturing beverages, or if there's labs, they have to look at what they would do with different filters for water quality, so that they get the results they want. So, we did this public information, it's in your packet, there were newspaper ads, John and I were on the radio, not a single person called in, we did some public meetings, I don't remember the exact number, but maybe five or six people showed up in addition to KPU staff, and we answered your questions. KPU plans on doing some more information in 2014, before that's added to the water again. And so, let's talk about a couple of new developments. Because of the state's approval, in the letter, they said more, more safety is needed in the UV reactors, and so, KPU invited Trojan Technologies, let's just turn this off. They invited Trojan to come back, and they were here this week, and they did the programming, and, there was the state being conservative, and there's a little bit of controversy in the UV industry right now, that's being researched by universities and others, that actually may end up making your system more efficient, before that data's out, the state said, let's just take a little bit of a safety factor. So, Trojan was here this week, reprogrammed, your reactors now are compliant with the state requirements, and you can take credit for disinfection. We're in the process of upgrading controls for chlorination, because you haven't had automatic chlorine set, and so typically, Ketchikan's added more chlorine than was needed for a safety factor. Safety factor will still be there, but the amount of safety factor is going to be reduced to save money and reduce disinfection byproducts. We're also doing an experiment right now, is approved by the state of Alaska, to inject your chlorine in two locations, so you use less chlorine, and you form less disinfection byproducts. That test is ongoing now, we don't have the results, but we expect good things from that. The most significant thing that has changed is when you were given filtration avoidance 20 years ago, your raw water quality from the lakes was very high. Starting in 2011 or '12, started getting coliforms and fecal coliform counts higher than the standard for communities that don't filter. And that's persisted now for going on now the third year, although 2013 doesn't have quite as many coliform hits. As a result, KPU hired us to go up into the watershed with some microbial experts, they collected, I used the nice term, they collected scat samples from various species of animals, sent that to a lab, and they're growing coliforms, and they actually have a way of checking the DNA of those samples and finding out what animal or what species they came from. The reason we're doing that is to see if there's something that KPU can do to mitigate the amount of coliforms, especially fecal coliforms, that's in the raw water that's coming into your system. So, it's important to note that something has changed, and we don't know why.
You don't have an answer yet on those?
Should have the answer in November.
Maybe this north, you're having yours.
Well...
I'm just being...
There might be several means to mitigate. As an example, when John first was talking to me about this, John Klanger said, well, we don't think we have any beavers, and then boom, they saw some saplings laying over, and I think Fish and Game or Fish and Wildlife came up and took a couple of beavers out. But anyway, if this is not resolved, the implications are that you may be required to put on a new capital project and do additional treatment. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but you have a filtration avoidance now, and that was granted because in about 1993, all the data set is your raw water quality was very high quality. The only thing that Ketchikan had some doubt about is you had a giardia outbreak, and you might have known that as a beaver fever outbreak that occurred from a basin that no longer contributes water to your system, that was taken offline, and so EPA said, hey, we'll grant you filtration avoidance. So, we don't know, if more animals have come in, if more birds are landing on the water, if it has something to do with temperature changes across the globe or not, but fortunately in 2013, the trend is down, we'd love to see that trend continue, but I'll let you know that the state has told me that they do have some concern, and it wouldn't be unheard of, I don't know the timing, three, five, seven years from now or something, the state might send a letter and say, we need to look at doing something else. I don't know the timing, it's a very rare occurrence, like I told you, New York City doesn't filter their water, Seattle doesn't, Portland doesn't, it's not as if Ketchikan is by themselves, and Kodiak doesn't, and there's a part of Juno system that doesn't, and none of Alaska is, and Cordova's is not. So, it's a little pink flag waving, and I'm happy to answer questions about that, we don't know the answer, but it is a little pink flag, and UV disinfection and chloramination does nothing to address the changes in your raw water quality, that is a benchmark you have to pass, and I have to filter your water. Any questions?
When did you say that we're going to start doing that? The UV went, what's that?
The UV is on now, the adding of ammonia is anticipated to be around April or May of next year?
Thank you very much. Bob?
Yes, Mayor.
Does that have any effect on our wastewater pipeline? Does it have any added issues there, maybe?
I'll through the mayor and Councilman Silverstone?
Severson.
Severson. The answer is no.
I think there was also a question asked one time, fish processors use a lot of water for common grains and discharge into Thomas Marrows, are they going to have any problems because of your change to a different type of water treatment? Will they have to do anything?
Councilman, no. No, this is a very common method of disinfection, it's just a different type of chlorination. A very, very small quantity of ammonia, we're putting in, by the way, very small.
Matt?
Just in terms of the public outreach, when would we be planning on starting the notification for ammonia?
I don't know the answer to that, I'm assuming that would be a month ahead of time or so?
Yes.
So, those that didn't hear, John's saying, once we get an idea of how spring is going to be and how the weather's warming up, the public information definitely will occur before the switch is made. We're under, Ketchikan Public Utilities is under no pressure from the state to hurry that up, the public information process is an important stepping up.
I just want to record, you're saying, I think we need probably two to three months of public information before we begin it, just to make sure.
Anything else? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We know you'll be back sometime. All right, that takes us down to vouchers, do we have a motion to approve 1,700 for the Daily News?
Your Honor, I move that we approve altruists for the Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of $1,761.90.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call the roll.
Bertrand?
Hi.
West?
Yes.
Harris?
Hi.
Severson?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing, that brings us down to manager's report, Carl, do you have anything else?
I do, Mr. Mayor, in our last meeting, I indicated to the council that we were looking for at least one council representative to be on the review committee for the hospital contractor selection. You told me to wait till this meeting, we're trying to get a meeting of that committee scheduled for next week. The council wants to designate someone, that's fine, if you're not interested, that's fine as well.
Any council members interested? Matt? Sir? Anybody else? Matt and Bob? Anything else, Carl?
Oh, yeah. At a recent meeting, we solicited council comment on the Stedman Street promenade, you gave us your thoughts, which we in turn conveyed to DOT, they responded that they're willing to address those, in particular, there was a question about changing out blue lambs, they've come back and said they can do a simple substitute using steel, but they feel that if they make that change, that cost should be ours, and including design, you'd be looking at somewhere in the range of 115,000 to 125,000. My recommendation would be to advise DOT to stay with the blue lambs. The Achilles diversion dam out at Whitman, we too have become a victim of the recent federal shutdown, the timber survey work that was, we were hoping to get done by now, has not been done, there will be some delay in that, we have not been able to quantify it, and we'll just keep you posted on that. Last one I had, Mr. Mayor, I guess I would define as a sensitive issue, I'm looking for guidance from the council. The city has been very successful over the last five, six years in obtaining state funding, we brought in over $100 million for various projects, and that was through a concerted effort with our state lobbyists, my office, and with the input of council members. I am concerned about how we're going to do things going forward, in that if the borough does go forward with its lawsuit against the state, it's going to make our job more difficult. I don't have any easy answers on that, but I felt compelled to at least raise the issue with the council relative to at least inviting your comments as to how you would like to see us move forward with the lobbying effort, if that litigation does in fact materialize. I put it out there, you can respond however you see fit.
Marty?
Do you think there's a need for us to formally distance ourselves from that lawsuit?
What I can tell you, Councilmember West, is it's going to be, if we don't do anything, it's going to make our lobbyist job and my job that much more difficult with the governor's office and the legislature.
Hard or brutal?
It's going to be tough. Again, you know, I got an email from the borough clerk today, Mayor Kifer has a report going to the assembly on Monday, given Saxman's refusal to endorse the priority list that three governments put together. Mayor Kifer does not want to convene the lobbying executive committee, and is seeking borough direction to advise the clerk to have the community priority booklet put together based on the list approved by the city and the borough, plus all the other issues that agencies and organizations bring forward. If that goes forward as a combined city-borough list, then again, we're going to be confronted as, you know, the city and the borough. And I guess my major concern is a project like Raising the Dam, how they're going to fund, I want to make it very clear to the people that I'm talking to, that I'm not part of a lawsuit that's going forward against the people I'm asking to fund those projects. How we do that, as they say, I don't have a good idea.
Anybody else? Matt?
Your Honor, my first trip to Juno for this process was the year that the borough was asking to be refunded for the purchase of the White Cliff Building, and every person I talked to up there, I said, well, you're from the borough, and I had to make sure that they understood I was representing the city, before I was, quite frankly, given time, and it's unfortunate that that happens, but I think, I think at some point, we're going to have to, we might have to do something here, if this continues, because we, the city's best interests are not, do not probably align with that lawsuit, so I don't know if we, I guess my recommendation would be to bring it back to the discussion at the next meeting.
Carl, they make their final decision, I guess they made a decision now they have to fund it on Monday, the borough, correct?
I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor.
Well, if it does go forward, I think at least we should need to send out some kind of communication to all the legislators, you know, the difference between the borough and the city, and that could be the first thing we do, whatever else we can talk about. But if you guys wanted as agenda item, we can do that, or if you guys like to talk about it on the next meeting?
I think we probably should.
Okay. All right, we'll make an agenda item for the following, for the next meeting. Anything else, Carl?
All call I have, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody have any questions on the manager? Matt?
I just have a comment, I can't remember which report it was, but it was the one about city hall and the fire issue, my only comment on that is I really appreciate staff's input and their research into the issue, and I think it just kind of shows how shortchanging a project that needs to get done at one point can severely cost you at a much later.
All right, that brings us down to city clerk's file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorney's file? Not here. Future agenda items, anybody have anything? We already put one on. Mayor and council comments? I'm KJ.
We have $1 million for that, is the projected price for the area of Carolina and all that. Three and a half million dollars is a lot of money on top of everything else we're spending. I know we got to get the work done, but because it would just work for 7% loans and grants and all this kind of stuff, that's still a lot of money for this little town to pile on.
Bob?
Yeah, a couple things, one of the things that, and I should have brought it up under the comments, is looking at the water utilization report that we have here for the month, it shows that the fish processors use approximately 30 million gallons, and I know what, is it $3.40 per thousand that we use for treating water? John, is that about what the cost is? Per thousand or 10,000?
It's 10,000 per thousand, the cost to the utility in 2012 was $2.67 overall.
Per thousand?
Per thousand.
So, you look at what the $30 million cost is to treat, and then you think about what your revenues are, and see if we're coming up anywhere close. Another thing is, we had a CEPAB board meeting in Wrangle, went very well, we talked about our projects such as Swan Lake, we talked about the true-up agreement with the Whitman Swan Lake Powerhouse roofs and stuff, so a lot of stuff's still going on, everybody's busy. One of the things we were looking at, putting a contract out for, for Swan Lake, is they need a board of consultants when they're working with FERC on design issues, and so we're going to get ahead of that. Small indications, we're about a year ahead of the process on permitting, so the project seems to be moving along fairly well. And so now, as Carl had said, we got to determine our strategies going to the legislature and ask for money, so that would be the next, the next thing on our list.
Thank you, Bob. Marty?
I just want to add to what KJ said, it is a lot of money, and it highlights the necessity of us maintaining a cordial relationship with the state.
Matt? I just had, KJ just popped something ahead with his comment, is it possible for us to get LID payment options for that project, just at some point? I mean, it's not immediate, but how much it would cost to permit LID and how much that LID would have?
If we get closer to final design, that would be the time to bring something like that, but the answer's yes.
Dan? Sam?
No comment, thanks.
Judy, your first words of wisdom, please.
I want to thank Mr. Amelon for making all the department heads available, and for those of you who are here, and those that I haven't met yet, I look forward to meeting with you, but it has been great, and they've done a great job of bringing me up to speed. I still have a ways to go though, so, but we're working on it.
All right, I don't think I have anything to add. We did get the tax-free day through the borough, and that happens this Saturday. Hopefully next year we can have it all arranged, so it's all during the moonlight madness and everything like the year before, which would make it a lot easier or less confusing. The, I've got budgets, Carl, when are we going to get those?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Newell and I are working diligently to try to have those to you by the next council meeting. If we don't have both, we'll definitely, I think, have general government with KPU coming shortly thereafter. I hope you're up to the challenge.
Uh, I think we do. Got ourselves into it, we have to take care of it. I thought I had something else, but, hmm, I have this problem every time. At least last time I couldn't remember what I was going to say, and I walked out and people texted me and told me what I was going to say. I was supposed to talk about tax-free day. All right, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.